Okay, I think everybody's back in the room. I entertain a motion to come back out of closed session.
I make a motion to come out of closed session.
All right, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion, second, for the discussion. I'll start the voting with Mr. Early.
Uh, I, yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, this time I would ask that each board member certify that whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors conveyed a closed session, the date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and on the motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas section 2.2-3711, AE 7 and 88 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public businesses matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, and considered in a closed session of which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was conveyed were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting of which this certification applies. So do I have a motion to certify this?
I so move.
All right, do I have a second? I'll start the certification with Mr. Dixon.
I so certify.
Mr. Hill?
I so certify.
Mr. Early?
I so certify.
Mr. Collins?
I so certify.
And I so certify. So at this time, we'll move on to the agenda, to the invocation pledge. I ask Mr. Collins to lead us in that.
Father, thank you for this opportunity to come and to tend to the business of Carroll County. We thank you for the citizens who've come tonight with concerns and questions and thoughts, and we thank you for the folks who are here to serve to tend to the business of those concerns. Pray for your leadership and your guidance, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. To start with, I would like to entertain a motion to re-amend the agenda to add under old business appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the, uh, those items you mentioned to the agenda.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second. Are there any discussion? All right, here and then, I'll start the vote with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we'll amend under old business to, for committee appointments. At this time, moving on to the agenda, we'll have from Roberts, Robinson, Farmer, Cox, Gordon Jones. Oh, Gordon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's good to be with you all. I realize there are some new board members this evening, so for those that don't know me, my name is Gordon Jones, and I'm a partner in charge of the audit for the county, and I'm from Robbins, Farmer, Cox Associates. You should have a couple of documents that Justin and I gave you. First one are your financial statements, a larger document, and you should also have an audit presentation, this is a little document. I'm gonna first start by talking about the reports that are included as part of your financial statements. There are three reports that we issue as part of your financial statements. Those reports are our communications to the users of the financial statements, so it's important that you all know what we are telling the users of the financial statements. The first report is the independent auditor's report. It's on pages two, three, and four of the financial statement. It's a clean, unmodified report, the highest level of assurance you can receive, no room for improvement there. It does talk about a new pronouncement, GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 84, fiduciary activities. Didn't have a huge impact on the county's fiduciary activities, but it did impact the school board's financial statements in that the school board had to pull in the school activity funds that previously were not included. That's, that's, that's one change to your financial statement. So if you, if you look through here and you see a restatement of GASB 84, it's because of that adoption. The next report that we issue as part of your financial statements is on page 122 and 123. This is sometimes referred to as the Yellow Book Report, Government Auditing Standards Report. It's our report on internal control and on compliance. Last year, we had a finding, an internal control finding related to adjustments. This year, there were none. There was, there was no finding for that. But we did report one compliance issue. It's noted over on page 123, and this has to do with checks that were issued to employees that should have been run through payroll, but were issued to accounts payable. I think you all have been made aware of that finding. If you want to read more about that finding, you can look on page 129, and you'll see management's response and the cause of the issue, more detail there. Any questions about that report before I move on? On page 124 and page 125, you have the Uniform Guidance Report. This report is required when you expend federal funds in excess of $750,000. It's a clean and modified report. Any questions about those three reports? Okay, I'm gonna turn my attention to the presentation, smaller document. Turn over to page, wait, page two. The, the county's books are kept on two different bases of accounting. One's full accrual, one's modified accrual. On top, you have the long-term perspective of full accrual. I'll direct your attention to the net position piece of that. It's about a third of the page down. Total net position for the county is about $45.6 million. Comparing that to five years ago, it was about $30.6 million. In particular, the unrestricted piece, the unrestricted piece of net position is the important part of that. For 2021, the county had $22.3 million unrestricted, and just five years ago, you had $6.1 million, $6.1 million in unrestricted net position. Down at the bottom, you have the modified accrual basis of accounting. It's a short-term perspective. It doesn't include long-term debt. It doesn't include long-term assets. The important piece to that is fund balance, almost all the way to the bottom. At the end of 2021, governmental fund balances were about $24.5 million. Unassigned fund balance was about $23.8 million. If you go back five years, unassigned fund balance was about $7.9 million. So you can see that over the past five years, the county's made great strides in improving fund balance, improving its financial condition. Over on page three, have the general fund summary. The general fund is the main operating fund for the county. You typically look at this fund when you determine, try to determine how well or how poorly a county did. The column all the way to the right is fiscal year 2021. Total revenues were about $51.5 million. Total expenditures, about $45 million. Most of the increase for the revenues were because of the coronavirus relief funds. For 2021, the county spent about $5.3 million in coronavirus relief funds. Most of those funds were expended in public safety. You can see a 7% increase over that seven-year period, over that five-year period. Most of that due because of expending those CRF funds. Health and welfare increasing at about 9.5, 4.5%. We've noticed that in the past, that social services and CSA expenditures are increasing. School board expenditures, basically flat over that five-year period, about $11.8 million, not including debt service. That number does not include debt service. So total expenditures of about $45.1 million, increasing at about 2.3%, 2.34% over that five-year period. Fund balance this year increased by about $6.3 million. Started with 18.1, ended up with 24.5. You can see that that ending fund balance, just five years ago, $8.8 million. It's now $24.5 million, or as of June 30th, it was. The ending cash balance at about $20.8 million. Just five years ago, five years ago, it was $5.4 million. So the county's definitely made some changes over the past five years. We're typically, we're often asked how much fund balance is too much, how much is too little. We usually recommend about 15 to 20% of operating expenditures. And we calculate that, including the county's expenditures of about $45.1 million, we add the school boards. So total operating expenditures for the county, including the school board's, about $79 million. seventy-nine million. Uh, so fund balance as a percentage of that is thirty-one percent. Cash balance at twenty-six percent. You can see it over that five-year period how, how well the county has improved. Any questions about that? Over on page four, um, sometimes you get bogged down in the numbers. You'd like to see pictures, so, or at least I do anyway. Um, couple pie charts of revenues for the general fund, uh, the top ones for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, the bottom ones for fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, you can see from this that property taxes made up fifty-one percent of total general fund revenues. Twenty seventeen and fiscal year twenty-one, it's forty-seven percent. Most of that decrease, uh, driven by the increase in state and federal funds, uh, the CRF coronavirus funds. You'll hear me repeat that a couple of times. Um, I don't know if the new board members know it or not, but, um, over the past two years, the county's received significant amount of, uh, federal funds, and they had to spend it, um, originally by December of twenty twenty, and then on the last day, they decided they were gonna extend it for another years. That was fun for everybody. Over on page five, uh, bar graph of the same information. Nothing real exciting here. Down at the bottom, uh, you have major revenues, property taxes being the largest one. Uh, you can see in that purple bar, uh, that the county's, uh, went to twice-year collections in fiscal year twenty twenty, which caused, uh, the revenue to go up significantly. Uh, you got a, a property tax collection of one and a half times what you normally do, uh, which has fueled a lot of the increase in fund balance. I'm sure you've heard about that. Uh, over on page six, the expenditures for the general fund, similar to what we showed for the revenues. Um, education five years ago was twenty-nine percent of the general fund budget. This year, it's twenty-six percent. And again, a lot of that decrease for the school is caused by the expenditures of the CRF funds and the increase in, uh, health and welfare. Over on page seven, uh, same, same type of graph for the expenditure side of it. Uh, public safety, a lot of the CRF funds, coronavirus relief funds were expended in public safety. So that's why that one is larger. Uh, social services and CSA and health and welfare have been increasing over the five-year period. The school board has been level over that five-year period, just under twelve million. Debt service, uh, decreasing all the way at the end there, which is a good thing. Speaking of debt, uh, over on page eight, have a summary of the county's debt. Always that, at least like to mention a county's debt or a city's debt. Uh, total general fund liabilities of about twenty-nine point nine million dollars. Those first five categories are interest-bearing debt. Those ones, those bottom three at the, those bottom three for the general fund are non-interest-bearing. Those are estimates. Uh, net pension liability for the county is about seven point nine million dollars. Um, and that's a, that's an estimate, um, provided by Virginia Retirement System. Uh, it's nothing that the county has done wrong. They pay exactly what the state tells them to pay. Um, this is just an actuarial liability that we're required to put on the books, um, based on GASB sixty-eight. PSA long-term obligations at about twenty-three point three million dollars. I put that on there because if you, if you compare this to the transmittal, uh, the comparative cost report, it will include the PSA numbers, uh, plus the county gives the PSA quite a bit of money to pay some of that debt, so I thought it prudent to put that on there. School board obligations. The school board doesn't typically have interest-bearing debt. Uh, the county carries all of that. Um, total obligations for the school board at about forty-seven point seven million dollars. Big piece of that is net pension liability, thirty-seven point two million dollars. The, the pension liability for the teacher, uh, side of that is one big liability, and the, the school board gets their piece of it based on contributions. So, um, it's, that's just an allocated number from the state. Debt per capita, uh, about thirty-four hundred, thirty-five hundred, and the state average for two thousand twenty was about sixty-two hundred. So if you compare that to the debt, uh, the state average, you're, you're under that number, about half of that. Any questions about debt? Over on pages nine, ten, eleven, um, this is our communication to those charged with governance. It's required by an auditing standard. Uh, we're required to have a communication at the beginning of the audit. We're also required to have one at the end. This is our letter at the end. Uh, hopefully at the beginning of the audit, if you haven't seen it in the past, you'll see it in the future, is our engagement letter. We use that as our communication. It's a clean, clean report. Uh, it tells you, uh, some useful information about estimates, um, whether or not we had problems with management, which we didn't, that we've requested certain representations from management. It's a clean report. Uh, over on pages twelve and thirteen, we have management comments. Uh, our management comments are deficiencies that we think don't rise to a level that have to be reported in the report. Um, some auditors will report everything regardless of materiality. Um, we have a little bit of leeway in reporting, um, non-material compliance and internal control issues, uh, in that we can either issue a, a, a letter like this, or we can put it in a report. Robinson, Farmer, Cox has typically, um, reported them in a letter. There, there are a number of comments this year. Uh, the county didn't have a finance director for nine months of the fiscal year, thereabout. Um, so it's tip, it's, 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 you would expect to find a few management comments. Um, I suspect next year, we'll have very few with the, the new finance director. Just, Mr. Martin. Okay, um, the last item here, um, I'm not gonna go each, over each of these, but I will mention GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Statement Number Eighty-Seven, deals with leases. Um, it will be adopted, will have to be adopted by the county in, in this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two. Um, it, it, it is not a, a nice statement, not that any of them are, but it's gonna require, um, all operating leases to be noted in the financial statements, whereas in the past, we could just use note disclosure. Now we'll have to show an asset and a liability, which will be fun. Hopefully, don't have that many leases. Okay. If you can, get rid of them. But that's, that's not realistic. Um, every county has to have, well, not every county, but most of them have leases, operating leases, so we'll just have to deal with it like we have the other ones. That concludes what I was gonna say. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those questions. The audit went well. Uh, the numbers for the county are, are in good shape. We had a number of, of issues that we wrote up, but it's probably to be expected when the county didn't have a finance director for most of fiscal year.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jones?
Is this? One question, Mr. Chairman, uh, to Mr. Jones. Several people in my district have asked me about the, uh, when we went to twice-year taxes and we've gone from eight million to twenty-four million, and, and you made this statement tonight that collecting that one extra time helped us to go up to that point. So that's a one-time fix. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It's a one-time fix, so, so if we spend that money, we go backwards minus the interest. Only way we can do it is to go three-year time, three times a year taxes. Is that correct?
I've never really thought about that.
But it was a one-time fix.
It is a one-time fix.
It's not, it's not, it, it just got us.
It did.
One time.
It did, but it also, it, it, you know, it accomplished a couple of different things. It not only increased our fund balance to probably an acceptable level, it also, uh, provided for better cash, uh, cash, uh, flows. You know, getting a half of the year in June helps you make it to the end of the year before you were struggling to get to the end of the year when all the cash came in, and, you know, you may have to do a, a revenue anticipation. So it accomplished a couple of different things.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It was a, it's, it's an easy fix for a county, but again, like you say, you can't go back.
Is this phone number reachable to you if anybody has any questions later on?
Yes, sir. I failed to mention it. If you have any questions, uh, you can email me. Uh, it's on the front, front of this page, front. Uh, you're welcome to email me or call me, either one, if you have any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Um, next on the agenda is citizen time. Uh, we have a few signed up. Uh, I'll remind everybody that comes up that there is a three-minute time limit, and, uh, I'll start with Nelson Montgomery.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to take an opportunity to, uh, explain a water situation that we've got at my house and some other houses in the Dougspur area. Uh, I live about, about four miles north of, uh, the elementary school on two twenty-one, and my wife and I've been in this house for over thirty years. We, we do use a spring, and that spring has served us well. Um, my father lived there before. He used that same spring for several years, and it's never gone dry. It's not absolutely dry right now, but the trickle of water that we're getting has, uh, forced us to come to town, take showers, um, get water to flush our commodes. Um, we got drinking water, of course. And this happened to us a couple of years ago, um, not quite as severe as it is right now, but we are, according to the news reports, in a drought, uh, county, and counties east of us are in drought. And it's, it's been getting a little bit worse each year, I think. And we're just here to, uh, ask for your help, your assistance, in trying to get some water, county water, down our way to Dougspur. And I think the water system goes to the elementary school, and we live, I live, about four miles from the elementary school. And I know it's very, very expensive to put water lines in, but, um, you know, times change, weather changes. Uh, we're just looking for y'all's assistance in anything you can do to help us get, uh, a water system into our community. That's really the crux of what I was asking for. Appreciate any help, any guidance that y'all can give us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Phillips.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not going to repeat everything that he said. I'm having exactly the same problem that he is having. You have to buy water to flush your toilets, and as you all know, uh, senior citizens live on fixed incomes, and buying water is not one of the things that I had budgeted in my budget for the year. But that's neither here nor there. Um, I wanted to give you a few of the female aspects of our problems as being a housekeeper. Cooking. If you want to cook, say mashed potatoes, you have to have a knife. You have to have a cutting board. You have to have a pot. You have to have a masher, but you don't have water to wash the dishes when you finish. You buy the water to wash your dishes. Cleaning house. You can't buy, well, we buy water to flush our toilets, but you've got to buy water to clean the sinks, to buy water to clean the stoves, buy water to clean the countertops, buy water for anything that you want. And I just wanted to give you a little aspect of what a female goes through trying to run a house without water. Now, I know that we're spending millions of dollars on the internet and getting that established, and that's important, and particularly to the students. But you can live without internet. You cannot live without water. And I'm hoping that you all will help us to under, get the other people to understand that the basics need to be met, and then we can worry about the luxuries. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. And, um, next is Jean Muse.
Hi.
Hello. How are you?
Pretty good. Um, and I'm basically here for the same reason, uh, to attest to the need and the interest that, uh, extends throughout Dougspur. And it's a long route to twenty-one that we're talking about here, which is the main, you know, road from here to Roanoke. Um, and, you know, we're not asking for way out in the sticks, way out in the boonies. Uh, at this point, it may be unrealistic, but, uh, you know, straight down the main road, uh, is what we're hoping for. Again, uh, I moved back to the area after being away for about thirty years, and it, uh, was surprising to me that we still didn't have water down there, uh, in Dougspur, and we live seven miles from Hillsville, right on two twenty-one, and, um, we're now on, well, it's our second well, but it's our third drilling. The second wi, uh, well we drilled, uh, was not usable, and so we had to drill another one. And we got that, and we got water. However, in addition to that, to be able to use it and drink it, uh, we had to put in a, a seven thousand dollar water will, uh, filtration system, and that system cost us about five hundred dollars a year to maintain. So I've heard arguments, you know, from both sides, and one thing I hear from people is, well, there's not enough interest. Well, there is a lot of interest. We do need the water, and my father actually worked on this several years ago, and he went to every home in Dougspur on two twenty-one, and there was a, it was a huge mach, majority of people that said, yes, they would like to see water. Now, whether they could use it right at this moment, whether they would connect was a different story, uh, but they're looking at their children and their children's children. And if you wanna look at progress, you gotta look ahead, and it's an investment. It's not just, you know, oh, we're gonna get water down to the Montgomerys and the Muses and the Huff's. No, we're, it, it can open up so many things for that whole, you know, seventeen miles from Hillsfield to Willis. Um, you know, stores, a gas station, um, you know, irrigation, all kinds of things. So you gotta look at your return on investment, because it is an investment, and, you know, it's not cheap, like they said, but, uh, it's doable, it's very doable, and, uh, I really, really hope you seriously consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Keith Wells. Maybe, okay. No comment. I will say on, uh, to them four there, um, which Mr. Watson is the executive director of the PSA, that is a public service authority issue. They, that board meets actually at four o'clock, and a lot of these members on there, so I'm sure that could be brought up in there to look and see what, what possibilities they are, if there's grant opportunities or whatnot, and, and, uh, I'm sure be more than happy to look at that. So next is David Bowman.
Good to see you again, gentlemen. Welcome to the new board members. I think y'all know probably why I'm here tonight. Uh, December fourteenth, twenty, Mr. Hill asked the, uh, county attorney to look into legal matters to address the sale of the training center facility, six four- of the training center facility. Six fourteen, Mr. Hill seconded with a motion by Mr. McCraw, instructed the planning commission to provide an ordinance to cover safety issues on the training center facility and any other facilities like this in Carroll County within a hundred days. It's past a hundred days. I've not seen this ordinance. Would very much like to see something, uh, followed up on that. Seven twelve, Mr. Hill made a motion and was passed to ask for the land back. I understand we have sent a letter to the state. I don't know where that is, don't know that we have an answer. If we don't have an answer, when people don't answer me in a legal matter, I instruct my attorney to file a motion in the court. The judge tells them to answer. Hopefully, like to see something on that and have the state take a position. We're giving it back, or we're not giving it back. Today I had, uh, picked up the Galax Police Department report for the facility only at the location life center of Galax one twelve Painter Street. We're still looking at eighty to a hundred patients there in the last year. We're looking at almost three hundred and fifty to four hundred calls in a year's time, medical and police. This year got a little out of hand. We are now looking at assault, drugs, larceny, suicide attempts, mental TBOs, fights. You have wanted persons, animal problems, trespassing, disorderly conduct, sexual offense. We're now adding rape. This is printable by y'all. Y'all can just ask for it if you'd like me to stick around at the end of the evening and let you look at it. We're now adding rape to those people coming in that facility. Everybody needs help. You know I'm asking to try to keep my county safe, my neighborhoods safe. A lot of women live over there. I don't want to ever see something that could have been avoided on a rape printout, because this facility was allowed to come in without putting up a heck of a fight. Mr. Durbin gave a pretty long spiel last time on his legal opinion. It is that, his interpretation of the law, and it is that exactly. We all know that law is not black and white, it's an interpretation. You ask three attorneys, you get three different answers sometimes. He was leaving out the two parcels that were given back to us last time in his interpretation until I brought it up, which he asked for. At that time, with him not bringing that up, he brought up in his statements that the land we can ask for, for whatever reasons, because they've made improvements. There's ninety-eight acres there. There are not improvements on all ninety-eight, which would leave forty, maybe fifty acres. There's a lot of woods, a lot of land that we could ask for. Under his interpretation, if we just asked for that land back, because there are no improvements, that would be something for the county. And something's better than nothing. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Good to see y'all.
All right, next is, uh, Paul and Jennifer Barker. Okay.
We were, received this, and she asked us to, if we could read it to you tonight. Gentlemen of the board, I come to you tonight in written form to express some thoughts to you regarding an issue in our county that I have observed over the last few years. The issue is the safety of motorists traveling along Old Appalachian Trail. It is used as an access road for the parkway for our, all commercial traffic, and used as the main thoroughfare for traffic when the Blue Ridge Parkway is closed. Let me first say that I'm aware you have extremely limited say, if any, regarding the numerous closings of the parkway due to inclement weather. If you inquire your residents in that area, they will tell you that if it even looks like snow or bad weather, the gates to the parkway are closed. During these closures, Carroll residents are forced to utilize the access roads that crisscross back and forth over the parkway, such as Old Appalachian Trail. It is not uncommon for closures to last for weeks at a time. These access roads in the best of conditions can be difficult to navigate. It is important to a mission to mention that the largest portion of your fellow county residents that live along the Blue Ridge Parkway are older retirees who are drawn to the mountains of Carroll County and the Blue Ridge Parkway. For instance, my wife and I live in the Chalet High community and are in our fifties. We are one of the youngest couples in our neighborhood. The vast majority of our neighbors are old. This raises significant concerns for them to travel along Old Appalachian Trail, which currently has many safety concerns, in my opinion. Some of those concerns are unpaved portions of the road, um, a significant portion of Old Appalachian Trail is unpaved. This makes it probably the worst part of the entire road. The width of the road during inclement weather, even when plowed for snow, it is extremely dangerous in several places when meeting another vehicle. Blind curves, there are several locations with blind curves. Muddy conditions, inclement weather turns the unpaved portion into a muddy mess. Poor road drainage, standing water due to no or insignificant rain, road drainage. Bad conditions remain for days and weeks due to the above-mentioned issues. The situation is exasperated by the road traveling through wooded areas not allowing sun to, to dry the road. Old Appalachian Trail, especially the unpaved portion, is not designed for significant amount of, significant amounts of traffic. I also remind you that all commercial vehicles are required to travel the access roads by law. Additionally, and most importantly, any emergency vehicles responding to medical or fire-related calls are required to utilize these access roads. I and others in my community are aware that this has been brought before the board before. Quite possibly, none of you were serving in your current capacity at that time. We are also aware of a list of roads that VDOT works on by the county. On behalf of numerous residents in this part of Carroll County, we are asking you, as a board, to prioritize this issue on behalf of many of your constituents that live in the Fancy Gap area. We would like you to request from VDOT that Old Appalachian Trail be widened according to VDOT standards and pave the remaining unpaid portions. I'm sure several of you are aware and have traveled Old Appalachian Trail during inclement weather. For those of you who haven't, I would be more than willing to provide you pictures of the road conditions. If needed, we can obtain for you an extensive list of names and signatures of residents who are negatively, negatively affected by this issue and ask for your action on this matter. However, we feel confident that upon learning of this issue, you will help us work towards a solution. I want to thank you for your time to hear us regarding this issue and look forward to hopefully seeing some action taken in 2022. Thank you for your dedicated service to the county.
Thank you, Crystal. All right, that's all that we have on citizen's time. Is there anybody else who wished to speak, you know, that could have possibly spoke on something over the last six months that the new board welcomed to hear? All right, we'll move on the agenda to payments and invoices. I entertain a motion to approve payments and invoices.
I make a motion.
All right, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? Here and then I'll start to vote with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from last, I guess it would be last Monday's meeting? And the last one before December? Okay.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Are there any discussion? Start to vote with Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, um, moving on under new business, the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right, have a motion to have a second.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? Here and then I'll start to vote with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Next on the, uh, agenda is VDACS. I guess that would be Cal.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. All right. Um, I might talk a little fast, and if there's something, I'll try to save room. Um, but thank you all for having me. My name is Kyle Rhodes, and I am the, uh, cruise supervisor for the Spotted Lantern Fly program with the Office of Plant Industry Services. And I'm going to talk to you all about Spotted Lantern Fly. Is it just this right here? Yeah, okay. So, um, just a quick backstory before I go into the life cycle, which is what we're looking at here. So, this is an invasive leaf, leaf hopper that came into the United States. In Pennsylvania is where they first found it in about 2014. Um, we've been looking for it, we, meaning, um, uh, extension officers, VDACS inspectors in the Winchester area, and they first found it, um, uh, in that area in 2018, early, about this time of year, actually. And so, um, a little bit, uh, going into that, they found it as eggs, which, this is a, a drawing, but, um, basically, they're very small, uh, thin, um, it's how this pest overwinners, and they'll put their eggs on anything from just a piece of wood laying on the ground, bark under a tree, old metal, um, they love chain link fencing, um, pretty much anything stored outside. And each egg mass has between, uh, as low as twenty, sometimes fewer than that, n-not many more than about fifty in each mass, and a female can lay between three and as many as seven egg masses in her life. And then you can see, uh, from the diagram that in like, uh, it says May, but this, uh, 2021, it was actually on my birthday in April, so they can hatch, um, and they'll start coming out and immediately feeding, and they just, uh, feed and then, um, go through a, um, a metamorphosis and grow into the different life stages. And you can see the red form there is the last, um, uh, what we call, um, like molt before they get wings and they're in the adult phase. Uh, and that usually happens, um, about, uh, like mid-July. Um, and so, as I said, they're a leaf hopper, but they're a, um, insect that, uh, has piercing, sucking, mouthing mouthparts. So, when they, um, like I said, when they come out, they'll crawl onto early shoots as nymphs, and they immediately start feeding. So, they actually inject their mouthparts into like a, a grape shoot, or, uh, as adults, they'll actually feed on the bark, uh, and they suck the sap out. So, they, they digest it that way. Um, and then, uh, so adults until hard frost. So, we found some early November down here, maybe a little later. Um, and then, so, why am I here? Why is this a bad pest in Virginia? So, the first thing is, um, it's a pest for agriculture and in, you know, throughout Virginia, we're a big ag state, so things like apples, um, that's, uh, vines. So, they especially like to feed on grapevines, wild ones or cultivated ones, um, but not just ag communities, uh, as residential nuisance. They can breed and become a, um, backyard pest. So, you can see, that's actually a tree of heaven that's entirely covered, and that's only showing you the bottom four feet. And then you can't really tell from that picture, but everything around there is black and sticky. If you look at the little toy car, it's kind of shiny. That's from the sap that they've sucked out of the tree and then excreted onto pretty much everything that's underneath of it. Um, and then beyond that, um, there's quarantine permitting aspects that can be a hindrance from this pest. We'll get into that a little bit later. Um, I should throw in there, not just, um, there's timber, you know, so they feed on walnuts, um, maples, um, oaks. There's really not a whole lot that they won't feed on. Um, and then that's ag tourism. So, um, not sure how many wineries are in Carroll County should have done that, but, um, in Virginia, it's a problem. And, you know, Virginia is becoming a wine state, so. So, talking about the spread, it's not a, um, naturally spreading, uh, insect. It only moves maybe a few hundred yards or maybe half a mile on its own. So, it's moved by humans, right? So, um, this picture is a tractor trailer parked at a gas, like a truck stop, and the arrow is pointing from a tree of heaven, which is their preferred host or one of them. And you can see, um, they jumped out of the tree onto the truck. The truck drives south, probably, and hops off again. Now, there's more. Um, other things such as pallets, um, scrap metal crates, um, logs, anything that's stored outside for a significant amount of time is an issue, because they crawl onto it, especially in the late summer, and they lay their eggs. Or as adults, they'll crawl into a little crevice, um, and they just hang on. For whatever reason, that's what they do. Um, so a couple of pathways I talked about, roadways, there's just some stats, I won't go into that too much, but Virginia has a bunch of roads and a fair amount of rails, and those are two vectors that we see them moving on. So, just a little bit about them in the, in Virginia. Uh, this picture is actually those egg masses. So, this was not in Carroll County, this was in Winchester. Um, but that whole congeal, that's like probably thirty egg masses, and that's just one section of the tree. Um, so they build up in high populations and then exacerbate the problem. Um, so, um, you know, movement in and out of state is a, an issue. Your, your neighbors to the south, uh, North Carolina is very vigilant about keeping this pest out. Um, it has done a fair amount of movement in the northern states, New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut, uh, over to like Indiana and Ohio, but so far, we're the furthest, um, state south with this pest. This way. Oh, yeah. Uncle Sam. Yeah. So, um, this is just a little bit about our, um, ongoing efforts. Um, basically, I'll, I'll go through this, but it's a cooperative effort. So, this program is not VDACS alone. We operate, um, with, uh, Virginia Cooperative Extension, USDA, um, AFIS, and a variety of other partners, VDOT, Department of Forestry, definitely, um, homeowners and businesses and municipalities. It's, it's definitely not a pest that one agency can deal with alone. Um, and there's just all these things that, um, we work on from education, trapping and visual surveys, treatment activities. Um, and I'm going to go into these a little bit more, so I'll keep going. Just a quick touch on outreach efforts. Um, we mail out permissions, we talk to landowners door-to-door. Um, when we have an infestation, we try to get access to make sure that either they know about it and they can deal with it, or we can help them. Um, and, and we're looking at other things like billboards. So, uh, one of the things that, one of the parts of the program is trapping. So, this is a map. Um, the, the polygons are the same, just, um, I got it late enough that some of the traps are, uh, inactive. So, that just gives you a, an idea of, um, how many traps we have across the state. So, you know, almost a thousand, um, traps, and I'll talk about those a little bit, but, um, trapping is part of early detection. And with this pest, the sooner you find it, uh, and determine how extensive it is, the better you can have a chance of, um, eradicating it, controlling it, or just, you know, dealing with it. Um, so this is just a couple of pictures of the different types of traps. On the left, those are what are called sticky bands. Uh, there's a little bit of negative press with them because of bycatch, so like beneficial insects that you would catch, you wouldn't want to. Um, mainly, you know, pollinators, bees, butterflies, other, um, pears toys. But, uh, the middle is what's called a bug barrier. That's the same sticky material but inverted on like, um, some batting. It's a little bit better. You don't get as much vertebrate bycatch either. And then the last one is a, um, uh, what's called a circle trap. And inside that bigger picture, those are all nymphs, um, in Prince William County, that they crawl inside the bag, they starve or cook to death. And so, that, these three are all mechanical ways of just finding them, and in some instances, we actually use them to control population. Uh, so there's a, a messy map, but this just gives you an idea of the amount of surveys that we're doing. So, all the green, and then there's some hidden red are positives, but the green are all negative. So, that's a good thing. And you can see, there should be some red where we're at, but it's kind of covered up. So, um, I'll, I'll get, get a little closer. So, just talking about surveying efforts, it's, it's a huge labor to go. So just talking about surveying efforts, it's, it's a huge labor to go out and survey because if I check a tree of heaven along the truck stop, you know, yesterday, that doesn't mean that in May, there's not going to be inactive population. So that's where a trap can be a little bit better because it stays there and collects insects. So it's just a different way, um, but, you know, a trap is just one tree. Whereas if you do a visual survey, usually you're looking at multiple trees or vines or whatever's there, materials. Um, so about 3,000, um, a little bit under, that's how many surveys we did last year across the state. And then zooming into your county, so this is the exit, uh, 14, right, um, west of here, right? And so, um, is there a, well, I guess you can see that basically that, um, this is right off the, um, off ramp and then, uh, the entrance going back on to 77. So, um, initially found by one of our inspectors in a trap. And then we've done, uh, surveys to determine how far they've spread, which is a good thing because that's the extent that we've found them so far in this county. So that's good. Um, and, um, I'll, I'll come back to it, but that's just a picture of how well they hide their egg masses. That's a hedge apple and like eight feet above your head. So really hard to find. Um, and that's just a detector dog. So just different ways that we use surveys. Um, but I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and talk about treatments. And then I'll, I'll wrap back around to what we're doing here. But you can see, we've done, uh, we do golden oil treatments, which are on the egg masses. We actually scrape them, so that's like physically destroying them. We kill tree of heaven, which is their, um, preferred host. It's also an invasive plant. And then biofenthrin and dinoethyren are just two chemicals we use. One of them is a contact insecticide, the other one is systemic, so it works inside the tree. Um, what you're, what you're more interested in is what we've done here. So once we found them, uh, one of our USDA, um, partners, actually with permission from the landowner, and we have an agreement with VDOT, has treated that site, the initial find, which would be on the off ramp side of 58 or 77, 58. Um, and so we didn't find the other side until about six weeks ago. Uh, so we haven't done any treatments there, but they're also all dead except for in egg masses. So it's not a missed opportunity really, but, um, and we've done the surveying and we've scraped and destroyed egg masses. Um, we're going to continue to do surveying throughout the county. Um, and probably with USDA's help, we're going to kill some tree of heaven. So that basically decreases their ability to reproduce. Um, and that's another study I could talk about. But I think there's some correlation between tree of heaven and this pest reproduction. And then the last thing is we'll probably do some, uh, insecticide treatments on those known areas, uh, as kind of a continued effort. Um, just real quickly, kind of the challenges, there's a rare endangered bumblebee that's not too far from here, as far as the crow flies, I guess, um, uh, in some of the counties north of here. And so that's a concern because the increased insecticide could be detrimental to this bee. Um, expansion of the quarantine. So, uh, last year, we did expand the quarantine, uh, into three counties. Uh, we'll probably reevaluate the counties in the state for quarantine, um, the next few weeks. I know there'll be questions about that, but that'll have to wait a little bit. And then, um, just, these are counties in the, um, mid-Atlantic that are either present of spotted lanternfly or are under quarantine. It's a little hard to see, and I can send you this, but the red highlighted counties are all quarantined and then the blue have a population. Um, so it's still relatively small as far as the pest goes, um, in the state. And we're trying to do our best to keep it that way. Um, and this is just a little overview of our permitting process. So if a county or, um, if a business is operating in a county that has a quarantine, they are required to go through this process, either through Virginia, Pennsylvania, or one of the other states that has a permit in order to conduct business in that area. Um, and so it's, it's pretty simple. They, they, they go through and, um, take a couple of, uh, do a couple of quick videos, quiz at each, at the end of each, they get a badge. And then if you have 10 employees, you have to train those employees. And then you're, um, uh, you're, you're permitted. If you were to drive up to Winchester and pick up a load of goods, all you have to do is inspect that that truck and those goods are free of spotted lanternfly, um, before you were to take it elsewhere. Um, so, um, that's, that's kind of a bigger part of, of what we're trying to do. So this is, this is to ensure that our neighbors to the south and some of our trade partners, um, globally, uh, can be assured that we're not sending this pest to them. So like North Carolina, for example, doesn't want this pest. So apples that come out of the north, they have to be inspected. The truck has to be inspected to make sure that it's free of spotted lanternfly. So what now? Uh, just a couple of things, um, that would help out, uh, with this pest in the program. Raising awareness, um, I understand that there's a couple of small flea markets that happen here. Uh, so I had no idea that even existed. That's awesome. But, uh, those are bringing people from all over the country, right? It's a big deal and regionally too. So, uh, during that time, it would be great to have outreach so that people that are coming aren't bringing with, so you don't want them to bring it down here. That's likely how it came down here and you don't want any more. Um, and then just staff knowing about it when they find it to destroy it. Um, other things like removing tree of heaven on any county-owned land you have, uh, could only help you. Um, and I think that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Can we, uh, thank the Chinese for this also?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, aerial spraying, is that a possibility or not?
Well, I mean, I guess you could, but it would be pretty devastating. So in a short answer, I think they're looking for a similar solution to this pest as gypsy moth. So right now, they don't have any kind of pheromone or broad scale. But that all takes time.
Cause they did gypsy moth spraying around here.
They do.
Last summer, I think.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else have any more questions? Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
And you all, that's, um, my email, my work phone number, or the just general one. If you have anything, feel free. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Regional Library, Trish Four.
Hello, my name is Trish Four. I'm here with the Galax Carroll Regional Library. And I think you should have, um, an infographic sheet here with some of our fiscal year 2021 statistics. And I'd just like to report to the, um, Board of Supervisors and Mr. Watson, what we've been doing. Um, I'm happy to report, we've had 37,381 library visits. 75,591 items have been borrowed. Um, over the last fiscal year, we issued 457 new library cards. And that brings us to a total borrower count of 16,590. Now that's just a little bit low, uh, because we're due to, um, do a, a purging of borrowers who have been expired for, um, over three years. So I am expecting that number to drop a little bit, but definitely glad that we have, um, 457 new, um, borrowers. Um, last year, um, I noted that there had been, um, several transitions at the library. And this year, we have really focused on staff training and cross-training. Um, and out of 15 staff members over the last year, um, from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, um, staff have attended 148 webinars, uh, on training. Um, during this time period, um, we had 7,382 reference questions answered. And those are questions by telephone, uh, at the circulation desks. Uh, we really try to count our statistics to measure what kind of, uh, response we're getting. Um, due to COVID-19 in the, the summer of 2020, uh, we moved our summer reading program into the fall. So last year, we had a, a fall and summer reading program and that numbered 413 participants. Um, the number of physical and e items that patrons have access to Um, we're still getting a lot of internet computer users at the library. And, uh, last year, we had 4,353 computer users. Um, our website received 33,871 visits. Uh, we've really been trying to grow our social media because that's where a lot of our patrons are. Uh, and we now have 1,383 Facebook followers. Um, and our Instagram account, which is fairly new, um, we've got 212 followers. Um, but we definitely would invite, um, all the supervisors to swing by the library. Um, come by and get a library card, doesn't take but just a few minutes and it opens up a world of resources, um, to you. Uh, also appreciate you letting people know, um, that these services are available. Um, coming up on February the 8th, 2022, the Galax Carroll Regional Library will celebrate its 40th anniversary. And we have some plans to celebrate big, um, which I'll come back around to in a few moments. Um, but I would like to in, definitely invite each of you to the library, encourage family members to come, uh, folks with small children, reading comprehension. You know, it really means a lot that you can read something and then understand what you've just read. I think we can all attest to that. Um, but if you're unable to come to the library, I would encourage you to check out our library website, um, like us and follow us on our social media pages and check out our YouTube page. Uh, so where people are, we're trying to reach them. On a daily basis, we're still committed to keeping a safe and clean environment for patrons and staff at the library. A lot of people pass through, um, and this includes high-touch cleaning. We've used some, uh, high-tech plastic wrap purchased at Walmart to, uh, put over keyboard cover, to act as keyboard covers and change those out in between, um, uh, computer users. Um, on September 7th, um, we, uh, began following the CDC guidelines for areas of high transmission, asking all patrons who come into the library to wear a mask. Um, if any patrons are unable or unwilling to wear a mask, um, staff will gladly provide them with some curbside service and make services available to them. Um, and that includes that we do have outdoor Wi-Fi, uh, which was made possible by, uh, COVID Cares grant funding. Um, current programs that we have going on at the library, uh, include virtual storytimes by our youth services coordinator, coordinator, Angie Lenore. Those are on pause this month. Uh, January is typically a time of planning, um, for the youth services coordinator. Um, but she will begin, uh, again in February. And, um, those are posted on the library's website, our Facebook page, our YouTube page, every Wednesday morning. Um, take and make craft bags that complement the month's theme are available for children. While, uh, the super popular teen-to-go bags, um, are continuing to be a big hit. Um, book walks are available outside at both libraries. Um, the Giving Snowman is now available at the Carroll County Library and the Winter Dance at the Galax Library. And that's basically, um, a book taken apart and put on, uh, a sign, uh, that we stick around outside the library. So you get a walk and a story. Um, and, and they have been very popular. Uh, there's also a youth services newsletter for parents and younger patrons, as well as a teen zine, like a teen magazine. Um, both function to communicate upcoming events and highlight new items that are available at the regional library. And planning is already underway for the Summer Reading Program 2022 with the theme Oceans of Possibilities. The Regional Library recently sponsored a food for fines program. Each unopened or unexpired item or pound of pet or human food, uh, equated to $1 of, uh, fines forgiven. All donations were sent to the local, uh, food bank, food banks. Um, Carroll County Public Library donations went to the Methodist Church here in town, uh, and also the animal shelter. Currently, um, there are small ongoing book sales at the Carroll Library in addition to the popular huge ones, um, that, um, are held in April and October. Uh, these book sales have generated, uh, some extra library income and we're in the process of brainstorming, um, some other ways of generating some extra bits and pieces of income. Um, this leads me to announce that the Regional Library Board of Trustees has voted to try going fine-free for one year in celebration of the Regional Library's 40th anniversary. This has been a trend in large and small libraries across the nation and in Virginia. Going fine-free supports the fundamental mission of all libraries, which is to provide equal access to information and knowledge to all citizens. Fines often hurt those who need access to libraries the most. We wish to remove the barriers to access. Um, and we expect to, uh, experience several benefits from going fine-free. Um, first, we hope to increase goodwill between the Regional Library and the community, as well as, um, between library users and library staff. We also hope to see an increase in the number of library users and the circulation of items. It's important to us to reconnect with borrowers, you know, who may be reluctant to come back to the library, uh, maybe they've had some just late fines. Um, you know, we don't, we don't want them to be so worried about that that they won't come back to the library for important services that we can offer. Um, there was much discussion about this decision. And when, uh, the library board took a hard look at the financial impact, it was realized that the fine income utilized in the fiscal year 2019 budget attributed to less than 1% of, um, the Regional Library's operating budget. Um, fine income has consistently been going down over the past several years. Uh, and that's partly because our, uh, Evergreen Integrated Library System, uh, it kindly sends out courtesy notices, uh, to folks who have items. notices uh to folks who have items checked out, and it lets them know, hey, you're about to have some library items due in a couple of days, and I think that has really helped um with the cutting down of uh of fines. Um patrons will definitely still be accountable uh for lost, damaged, and missing items. Uh loan periods will remain, loan periods will remain the same, and due date slips will still be given out, and patrons will be notified of uh overdue items. Um as we celebrate the fortieth anniversary of the regional library in February, uh which is also Library Lovers Month, we would like to ask the Carroll County Board of Supervisors to proclaim the week of February seventh through the eleventh, Galax Carroll Regional Library Week. Looking ahead, I wish to close by expressing the desire of the library to be an active county department, helping to meet Carroll County goals. I would love to talk with any of you who have an interest about how the library can continue to help c- meet community needs. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be definitely glad to answer.
Thank you for coming.
All right.
Any questions? Anybody? All right.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
At this time, has everybody had an opportunity to look at the resolution for the library?
We have, uh we have to pass that today.
Yeah.
For coming to effect.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll read it out loud here. It says, uh, "A resolution proclaiming February seventh through the eleventh, twenty-twenty-two to the Galax Carroll Regional Library Week, whereas the Carroll, Galax Carroll Regional Library has been serving our community in meridays of forty years, and whereas said lib, so said library is an excellent resource in the community because of its excellent staff, services, and facilities, and whereas our library serves as a great equalizer of knowledgeable by providing free access to all, whereas our library works to meet the changing needs of our citizens, including building collections, expanding outreach services, and increasing program, programming, and whereas our library provides a forum for diverse ideas and points of view that help us better understand each other and ourselves, and whereas our librarians are trained professionals, helping people of all ages and backgrounds find the, interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work, and whereas our librarians design and offer programs to meet the community's economic needs, providing residents with job-seeking resources, and whereas our libraries are places for educational opportunity and lifelong learning, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Lovers Month. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Carroll County Board of Supervisors, that this board hereby proclaims February seventh through the eleventh, twenty-twenty-two to be Galax Carroll Regional Library Week, and the county of Carroll urges all residents to visit the library during this week, take advantage of the wonderful resources available, and also the board also recognizes that twenty-twenty-two is the fortieth anniversary year for the Galax Carroll Regional Library, and encourages citizens to visit to engage with the celebratory activities throughout the year in support of the library's continual support and net lifting of the community for the past forty years. To have a motion to approve this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion. We approve this resolution.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. I'll start the vote with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Next is Hope Incorporated, Jordan Stidham, Stidham.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Stidham. Um I grew up over in Grayson County, uh moved away to go to college at Radford, um had a bachelor's in accounting, MBA in small business management and development. Um and then about a year, three or four months ago, I moved back here, now in the Carroll County side of Freeze. Um as a part of coming back and kind of getting into the career field of accounting and business, I've made it sort of a mission of mine to give back to nonprofits and other groups, um to help them operate sustainably. Um as a part of that, um and specifically to the region that I grew up in, um like I proposed um a state law recently to change the way that they determine funding for counties based on the percent of land use that is agricultural versus developed. Um and I haven't got an update on that, but I submitted that one back in, I believe, August to try and help this area that's predominantly cattle and Christmas trees get a boost in funding. Um I've submitted, I believe it was to Supervisor McCraw, um an idea to do a property tax refund type thing for all first responders that live and own property within the county, to kind of help with the retention of people that, you know, put their lives on the line for us. And along with that, um I also do volunteer um accounting and um business structuring and planning for nonprofits such as um fire departments, uh rescue squads, things like that. I just, I give my time to help them succeed. And so that brings me to Hope. Um I accepted a job at the beginning of December as their Director of Development Fin, or Real Estate Finance and Development, and so I'm over all things housing, current and future. And as you can see in the first page here, um it's helping overcome poverty's existence is what the acronym stands for. Uh we are a five-oh-one C-three nonprofit. Um we serve Bland, Carroll, Grayson, Smith, and With, as well as the city of Galax. For those of you that are unfamiliar with what Hope is, we focus on two main areas. Uh we have housing security and food security. Within the food security realm, we have the Open Door Cafe, which is a pay-what-you-can restaurant. Um we say that each meal is worth eight dollars. If you pay ten, your two goes towards the next person, and if you can't afford anything, we offer, um you can volunteer time, pay for your meal. Most of the people who don't pay for the meals are usually um a high percentage of elderly or on fixed incomes, and it's actually become a really cool culture thing there. They'll come to Open Door Cafe for their lunch, and they'll hang out at the cafe, they become a part of the team even as volunteers, and so we feed them, they volunteer, it's kind of like community building. And then the second part of food securities we do is Hope Packs. So currently, we pack about seven hundred and ninety-five food packs for kids to take home over weekend and school breaks when school lunches are not available. Um for me personally, I'm currently working on expanding that Hope Packs into Freeze, because I live in the Freeze part of Carroll, and into the Carroll schools. Uh once I expand into those, I plan to go into Grayson, because that's where I grew up, and that's where I'm also a soccer coach currently, and so I'm trying to really hit the places that are important to me. And then on the housing security side of that, we have two main areas. We have what's called rapid rehousing. So we help people that are homeless and um critically at risk of being homeless. We place them in temporary housing, and we find them long-term rentals, and we pay their security deposit and one- or two-month rent, and help them find jobs so that they can support themselves and hopefully not revert back into homelessness. And then the second area of housing securities um falls under me. Uh we are, we provide rental properties, and that has kind of a vast array of what that entails. So we have group homes that we provide for Mount Rogers, um adults with disabilities. We have uh duplexes and single-family homes that are reserved for fifty and sixty percent AMI household income, which, example of that, in our duplex, we currently have a mother, father, and a child. Um father owns his own business, um mother's a stay-at-home mom, dad makes around about forty thousand a year, and when I say affordable housing, it really should be called workforce housing, um because that small family making forty thousand qualifies for our duplex. And so what that means is we keep rents set currently below market, um and we follow HUD fair market value, so we only increase what HUD says is reasonable to pay in the area. And the other side of that is in Carroll County. As you can see the breakdown on the first page there, we have fourteen low-income units in Carroll County, specifically Hillcrest Apartments. Um currently, ten of those are reserved for Mount Rogers Permanent Supportive Housing, and as the four that are Hope residents vacate, um whether they move out or um several of them are elderly, um so we have one that is going into a nursing home, which will make her unit available. As those four become available, they will all go to Mount Rogers. Um according to my contact at Mount Rogers, they have about thirty-five PSH vouchers that they can't fill because they can't find housing. Um they just can't place people, and so we're working on converting those into the PSH units, as well as developing more units. And so current projects, um in my office, I've got a big whiteboard. In Carroll County, um a sixteen-acre plot of land recently came available, um and so I'm running a feasibility on it to see, you know, what is it zoned, what's the density, what, what workforce range would benefit Carroll County. I've looked at a quadplex in Carroll County to remodel instead at sixty percent AMI. We're buying properties in Galax as well, um just the whole regional area, developing twelve new townhouses in With County, um and part of those will be for permanent supportive housing through Mount Rogers. And so the accountant in me, when I took over at Hope, um Hope is a little over ninety percent funded through grants and donations only. Um we have, as you can see here, a handful of properties, and we operate our rental properties basically on a shoestring budget, uh because we do keep our rents so low, and we do receive um grant funding to help offset the equity of those properties. Um but on the Carroll County property itself, um we currently are paying um real estate tax on that property, and as a five-oh-one C-three, um I'm here to request that our property be made tax-exempt. Um I believe, I was looking at the tax records today, and I believe it's just under four thousand is what we pay, and so that four thousand, you know, while the grand scheme of, you know, the budget obviously presented and the financials in the audit is, you know, dropping the bucket to the county, to us, it's that much more that goes into our budget. It's that much more that goes towards the townhouses we're building, um the quadplex I'm looking at, um because even though we do get grant funding, we still have to put up our own cash into those deals to make them work. And so as I was looking through this, you know, I was thinking, how do we improve the efficiency? How do we get the most net income so that we can reinvest back into our mission? Because we don't, you know, we don't have high-paid executives, we don't have shareholders, we don't have big bonuses. Everything we make goes one hundred percent back into our mission, whether it be housing or food securities. And so for Hope, um a small regional nonprofit, every dollar counts. And so um I've provided for you as well the aerial map of the property. Um you can see it's three buildings that are the same size, and then one smaller building. Um they're all made with the little dots on them to show each unit that's in there. And then I've also provided the information from the GIS system that shows when we purchased it back in twenty-thirteen, it was a foreclosed property to the bank. We bought it and used HUD money and Virginia Housing money to remodel it, and I believe if you go back through those pages, it talks about um the remodels that we did, and it, I guess it changes the tax value by doing that. And so um with all that being said, um I hope that you all will consider removing our tax status on that property so that we can put that money back into growing our mission to the areas that we serve around here. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions?
Have you checked with the Town of Hills? They're, they're, they collect father tax as well.
Yeah. Um, yeah, when I came here, I spoke with, I believe, this gentleman here, and he had suggested the kind of steps that I need to take, and so this is actually the first supervisor meeting I've been to in this role, so just following the steps, learning as I go.
Are you looking to build anymore in Carroll County, or?
Yep, so like I said, we've got that sixteen-acre plot that I'm running feasibility on.
Okay.
I've got a four-unit quadplex that's um, it's rough, it's very rough, and so I'm talking with the community bank that we work with, looking at what will it take for us to re, because it, in my opinion, it's almost to the point of being condemned. Um it's gonna need about two hundred and fifty thousand, and from what I estimate, and then we look at what grants can we get from the State Housing Trust Fund so that our mortgage is low enough that we can, we can keep those rents set, because let's say I put that quadplex at a sixty percent AMI. I believe in Carroll County, a two-bedroom unit, according to HUD fair market value, is seven oh-two is the maximal, but then you have to back out utility allowance. So in the end, the max that we can charge for a unit in Carroll would be five ninety-seven, regardless of what our mortgage is. HUD sets those limits, and so I'm trying to figure out how do we put in our equity as well as grant money to get our mortgage below to where that rent gives us enough money to maintain, maintain the property, so new HVAC units down the road and stuff like that.
Right.
Um and that property may not be feasible. Um it just depends on what our cost is gonna be, what our grants are gonna be, but when I came on board at the beginning of December, my, I was given to kind of, here, you're projected, we want you to do this. It was improve our efficiencies and expand us into our entire region, because right now, um we serve Smith County. We don't have a single unit in Smith County. We don't do any PACs or nothing there, um and so I'm going to be going into Marion. I'm gonna be adding more units in Carroll. Um I've been reaching out to one of our board members, and this isn't Carroll, but um she's the Director of Social Services, and one thing that I want to do is, I wanna try and figure out how to get funding to build transitional housing for kids that are aging out of the foster system. So when they hit twenty-one, they're on your own. I wanna, I wanna build housing, when you turn eighteen, you live in our housing, we teach you how to budget, we teach you how to apply for jobs, how to apply for a community college if that's where you wanna go. So to me, I'm improving these efficiencies so that I can grow our mission in this region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next is Family Resource Center, Ashley Manuel. Evening.
Thank you for your time this evening. I'm a preacher's kid, so I can be long-winded, I'm gonna try to keep it short and sweet. Um tonight, I'm gonna be talking to you about our agency, the Family Resource Center, which was founded in nineteen eighty-three. Um it is a nonprofit agency um to provide services to the community and survivors of domestic and sexual violence. I do not, I'm not gonna be presenting numbers to you, I have brought our Community Response Director to give you our numbers and data, I'm not a numbers person, um but I am excited to talk to you about the lethality assessment program that we are bringing to the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. At the beginning of last year, as the lethality assessment coordinator, I went and spoke to Sheriff Kemp about bringing this program to Carroll County. We know there is a serious need um for it here. He agreed, um but because of COVID restrictions, it's been up and down trying to have meetings and doing the application, um but the lethality assessment program is sanctioned by the Attorney Journal's Office and is sponsored by the Department of Criminal Justice Services, and they decided a few years ago it'd be a good idea if our law enforcement had a screening tool that would help them assess victims of intimate partner violence that were at the highest risk of being killed or seriously injured by, by their intimate partner. And so they And so they brought this program out of Maryland down to Virginia. And we started piloting this program in two thousand and nineteen with the Grayson County Sheriff's Office. And we've now expanded to Galax City Police Department, Independence Police Department, and now we're bringing it to the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. We are very excited to be doing this. Last year, when we spoke to Sheriff Kemp, they had received, the year before, they had received over three hundred domestic violence calls. And what this lethality assessment program does is give the officers this screening tool, which I can pass one around. It allows the officers on scene to, after they've decided who's the predominant aggressor, to pull the alleged victim at that time to the side, ask them this set of eleven evidence-based questions, and help them determine who is in need of our services as the Domestic Violence Service Provider. I carry the cell phone with me twenty-four hours. I have for the past almost three years, just to answer law enforcement from Grayson County. And we're going to have someone who's doing the same thing for the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. So when they are on scene and they have a victim that's in need of emergency shelter, hospital accompaniment, any additional resources we can offer, they call us on scene and we talk to the victim then. We know that it's normally reported that victims are more likely to take help if they get it within the first few minutes of contact with law enforcement versus waiting to go talk to victim witness director or to their counselor or a therapist or even their pastors. They're more likely to come and agree to services. And we can try to help them leave that domestic violence situation. Within the first year that we piloted this program, I was getting married that year, and I remember the week of my wedding, I received ten calls alone in that one week from Grayson County Sheriff's Office. To date, we have almost a hundred and fifty calls that have come in, and these are strictly on intimate partner violence incidents. We know that with law enforcement, domestics can mean a lot of things, but this screen is to be used strictly with intimate partner incidents in hopes of reducing serious injuries or homicides. And so when Sheriff Kemp agreed that we could start the application process and get this program going, I was very excited. And so that's what we're here to talk to you about tonight. And again, I'm not the money's person, but Ms. Regina can answer your, your questions about the budget she's going to talk to you about and our need. Again, we are a nonprofit. We are a very small agency. But we are very dedicated to ensure that every victim and survivor of sexual and domestic violence knows that their life is valuable and that they are important, and that there are options if they are willing to take those. So I know I said, I say that real fast. But are there any questions about the program?
I guess not.
Yeah, I said that really fast. Again, it, it gives law enforcement a tool on scene to call us immediately. And the feedback we get from law enforcement is that helps us feel like we did everything that we could and we offered everything that we could. It's also helped, this program in the, in the areas where we have it established, it has helped reduce repeat calls. And we have seen these victims come in and actually want services. So it has helped law enforcement not have to respond to repeat calls because victims are willing to come in and seek services. So we're very proud of this program. We're very proud that it's come into Carroll County. Very thankful for Sheriff Kemp that he's entertaining this idea. And we hope that it can help victims get out to safety and help save lives in the long run. I'll turn it over to Ms. Regina. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Regina Eller, and I'm the Community Response Program Director. And I'm going to be pretty brief with what I have to say too. I know some of you are aware of Family Resource Center. Some of you may not be. Some of you may have been, seen a presentation before, but not really remember a whole lot about it. So we are the Domestic and Sexual Violence Program that serves with Smithland, Carroll, Grayson, and City of Galax. We've been around, like Ashley said, for, since nineteen eighty-three, making us one of the oldest programs in the state. And I've been with the program for almost thirty-five years. And I go all over the state and meet with people from other localities who also have these services. And I've always been very, very proud of the level of what we've been able to present. You know, you head down to Richmond, you've got all these folks from more populated areas. And I think a lot of times, you know, well, just like everything else in life, right? They sort of think maybe we're the little people, you know, that came out of the mountains and that sort of thing. But we're all really very advanced in the services that we offer. We actually have six of our staff that are certified by a national program that certifies folks who work with victims of trauma. And it's not an easy process. They're involved in that for months. And during those months, they're basically proving their knowledge and their skill level. So that's really a pretty big deal. I'm going to talk just a minute about what it is that these folks get when they are referred through the lethality program, what happens when they come to us? What is it that they're coming and receiving? So we do provide supportive counseling. And that is with someone who is a specialist in what happens with trauma and what the outcomes are for folks and the way that they function, changes in the brain. There are just some very fascinating things that have been discovered in the last few years because the technology that they can do brain scans with and that sort of thing really has started to solidify a lot of the things that programs like us saw from the beginning. So we were started by a group of citizens in the community. Some of them were allied professionals. Some of them were just people who wanted a program like this in the community. And it started in Withfield. And our main office is still in Withfield. We do have an office in the Twin Counties that we maintain. And staff comes here to the courthouse with folks. We're always trying to do everything that we can to take the services out into the community, especially for the folks who would have no other choice to get services otherwise. So the Trauma Informed Supportive Counseling is one of the things that we offer. We also offer some specialized therapy and assessment by licensed therapists. Those are not the bulk of the services. Those are actually pretty rare, simply because we don't have the staff hours available to do that. We provide legal and court accompaniment, support. We go with folks to meet with victim witness, to meet with Carroll County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, anything that will help them get ready and get prepared emotionally for court. Oftentimes, we will have the Commonwealth Attorney's Office say to us that they would really like for us to work on a particular thing with someone, trying to get them more comfortable being in the court environment. The next thing is that we do medical accompaniment, also generally to the emergency room in the case where there's been physical injuries from domestic violence, whether there's been a sexual assault and there's an evidence collection process. Oftentimes, law enforcement are the ones that go with the person there. And sometimes we're contacted from the beginning. Sometimes the ER contacts us. And we do have a twenty-four hour hotline that is accessible throughout our service area. We have backup support on that from the Virginia Domestic and Sexual Violence Hotline, who have the ability to answer those calls and dispatch them back to us. And our services are provided to both individuals and families. They're provided to females, males, and children of all ages. We try to just meet people across the lifespan. Last year, in Carroll County, this is last calendar year, we provided shelter to a hundred and ninety-three folks, and that's children and adults. And we provided just general services to people from Carroll County. There were sixty-three. And the thing that we notice is that with LAP, our request for these services, of course, is going up. Ashley was pretty brief about it, but it, it just impacts all the way around the things that happen with the folks who become involved with that program. And so our shelter request went up two hundred percent last year. And that is due partly to LAP and partly to factors that we just don't know the answer to. Previously, we have received six thousand dollars in the Carroll County budget. And we must have local contributions, as someone else said tonight, I believe. We have to bring in local match dollars. If we don't have that twenty percent local match doctors, dollars, doctors, right? We'd like to have some local match doctors. But if we don't have that percent of the local match dollars, we won't get the money. They'll just cut our funding. You know, it will just be hanging out there for someone else to get. So that's one reason it's very important. When you give us money, we multiply it, really essentially, with the grants that we receive. And so we had received the six thousand dollars. The last budget, we didn't receive anything. I think there's, there were some issues and we were the ones, we were one of the people that were cut. Not our issues, but some other things. And the truth is, we need seven thousand dollars to cover these LAP services in this county. We needed to cover, as Ashley was saying, that telephone. Because of our agreements with the Attorney General's Office using that protocol, we're required to do certain things. And one of those things is to absolutely have someone to answer that phone. So if we have someone on the phone that's the primary, we've got to have a backup. So we have to deal with that. We also have to have direct phone lines. That has to be a dedicated phone line. We can't use our regular hotline number or that sort of thing. So that's about what we project that it will cost, really, in addition to the funding that we already have to fund the things that LAP does. That's about what we're projecting. So that would bring us up to sort of a break-even point with the LAP money. And that still doesn't get us back up to the six thousand that we've relied on for quite a few years. I know the funding's been up and down really throughout our, all of our localities because of the economy and any number of reasons. But we've always really counted on Carroll County as one of our strong partners, you know, in providing the services here and bringing the services here. So I think the other thing I just wanted to, to say is that, I know when I first came to work at Family Resource Center, I, I sort of had this idea that what we were trying to do was keep people from fighting. You know, and, and the real bottom line isn't that. The real bottom line is we're trying to keep people alive. And as you guys know, I mean, we have homicides here. And isn't a homicide, we have children who grow up to be adults whose lives are not what they would have been without the, the trauma that was going on in the home and without what it would have been if they could have just determined their own life and their own fate. So do you have any questions for me?
Did you tell us how many clients you actually served in Carroll County?
I did. We served sixty-three in calendar year twenty-one. Now, what we expect, and those sixty-three are, perhaps some come from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. A few, very few will come through the statewide hotline that I mentioned, who will then refer them on to us. Maybe a few from social services. And, but it's often a whole lot of, almost like a walk-in, you might say. People hear about us from someone else and then contact us. And that number is the number that we're expecting, that will go way up due to these LAP contacts. The other thing that we found sometimes is that law enforcement, because of working with our staff so much and being so familiar with what it is that we provide, they are thinking more about making referrals to us when it's not maybe the, the level of emergency where they would call the LAP program. Or they'll think back through it again and try to figure out what it is that maybe they could have done, that they didn't think about doing. We've had the Commonwealth Attorney call us and ask us some questions about a case. We've had investigators call us and ask us some things. We have abundant resources in the state that can be called on throughout the, the different departments, Department of Criminal Justice and the Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence Action Alliance, to have a lot of resources. Virginia Poverty Law Center. There's just a lot of places that we can put people in touch. But the LAP program, it eats a lot of resources. But boy, it, it does a lot. It does a whole lot. And I'm really proud of Sheriff Kemp for wanting to bring you here.
And as a nonprofit, you, you accept referrals from anywhere?
Absolutely, anywhere. Anyone calls, we will take the referral. We also, so you don't have to talk to law enforcement before you call us. You could have had a case that was in court and the person was found not guilty. So, you know, you could essentially say, well, that didn't happen. That's what people typically think. Well, they're saying it didn't happen. Well, they're saying there's not the evidence to support that, which doesn't mean that. We work with those folks. We will work with all the referrals that we get, really, and meet them where they are. I'll leave you with a brochure that says a little bit more about our services. But the big thing is that we do meet people where they are. You know, a lot of places you can go and get a list of what it is that they do. And that's all well and good, as long as you fit that cookie cutter model. And a part of what we do is very intentionally meant to tailor itself to what the person needs individually. So yes, I'm, I'm the person who's asking you to consider the funding.
Mr. Watson, is that something that they can apply for the, through the grant process that we already have in place?
I think we'd have to increase the grant value, but, yes, that is, that was.
Over the, over the last couple of years, we've changed it. Instead of just, we've put a grant process out there that you could go through. All my questions would be that.
And I, and I do believe that we took, took part in that grant process last year. I think I saw the letter.
I think so.
For last year today, yeah.
I thought I'd seen it. I would like to just, I was actually going through your nonprofit form, your 990 that was sent in. And it shows that you have a lot smaller number of employees than you do have volunteers.
Yes.
That sound correct?
That is true. And that's, that's true in part, Department of Criminal Justice requires us to use volunteers for direct services. That's, that's a whole piece of all the funding that they give us. It's a lot more difficult, especially during COVID, to use volunteers. Some of the things that we've used volunteers for previously included having them there at our building, providing services, especially those who are interns. And that is just not impossible. We have been spread out all in our building. We only have a few people each day in the physical locations. We have one in Marion, one in Galax, and then the one in Withfield.
I was just looking through the report. It said you had twenty employees and a hundred and twenty volunteers through that year. That's pretty impressive.
Well, that is. And that, that includes our board members. It also includes people who do special projects and interns. The interns are really critical to us. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's okay with the board, I think. Maybe we might, we've had a pretty long meeting, so far it took a five-minute break. And before we come back and finish up. Is that all right? All right, it's five-twenty, so, or eight-twenty, so eight-twenty-five?
Speaking to my, speaking to my heart.
Speaking to my, speaking to my heart.
Okay, next on the agenda, we'll move to the Twin County 911. Darlena Young and Chuck Edwards.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thank you all for the opportunity to come speak to you all about currently the radio system. And it's a shared radio system with Sheriff's Office, Carroll County Fire and Rescue, as well as volunteer fire departments and rescue squads in the county. Much of the current VHF analog system was built over 20 years ago. Some of the equipment was refreshed with a Homeland Security grant in 2008, 2009. However, much of the core equipment is no longer available or supported manufacturers. Agencies are beginning to independently pursue grants to improve reliability and coverage, which threatens interoperability during multi-agency responses. The Radio Interoperability Task Force was formed with cooperation with 911, containing of Carroll County, Grayson County, City of Galax, and representatives from the Sheriff's Offices as well as the EMS agencies. The Radio Interoperability Task Force was able to secure a grant through VDM to conduct a needs and assessment plan that was conducted and assigned to federal engineering, who came in and was able to come look at all of our sites, actually do interviews with users of the radio systems, and be able to come up with what they felt like was going to be in the best interest for all the entities involved. What they decided was the aging land mobile radio equipment, much of it was at the end or near end of product lifecycle. Puts jurisdictions at risk for potential system failures that cannot be repaired. We're kind of seeing that in Carroll now with the microwave system. If we have a failure, one of the first places the vendors goes to look is eBay, because the equipment that we're currently using is just not supported by any manufacturers. Radio users experiencing insufficient radio coverage, some channel congestion due to an inadequate number of frequencies to accommodate paging and operational traffic at the same time. The backhaul system connecting most of the LMR sites to dispatch lacks path redundancies to provide alternate routes for connectivity to key land mobile radio sites in the event of a primary path failure. No centralized network management system to enable maintenance staff to remotely monitor or troubleshoot the LMR microwave radio networks to where you could actually see where there's issues before they're an actual issue. So they came up with two alternatives was what the recommendation of the Radio Interoperability Task Force. Alternative one is upgrading the Carroll, City of Galax, and Grayson County land mobile radio systems to a VHF P25 conventional digital simulcast system. That is federal engineering's primary recommendation is that prototype. Alternative number two is upgrading the Carroll County, City of Galax, Grayson County land mobile radio systems to a VHF DMR or Next Edge conventional digital simulcast system. Currently, we're weighing out how to make short-term repairs in a way to minimize short-term interim expenses. The benefits of those, each alternative addresses existing system vulnerabilities by providing new current production land mobile radio and microwave equipment for increased reliability and redundancy, improved radio coverage to meet stakeholder requirements, reduce manual intervention by radio users for site selection for increased operational efficiencies, an IP-based backhaul system connecting all sites with increased capacity and path redundancy, and a network management system to remotely be able to monitor and troubleshoot equipment and monitor site alarms. Costs can be lowered by lowering benefits. Depending on solution of the existing equipment may reduce costs. The task force is using the RFP process to get factual data to provide alternatives. Decisions will likely impact communications for the next 25 to 30 years. In your package, you'll see some cost estimates. I'm not going to go through all of that. You guys can look over that and break it down. You'll definitely see there's a substantial amount of difference between the cost of the P25 versus the alternative, which was DMR or Next Edge. The next is the coverage matrix. Just to give you guys an idea, you know, everybody wants to be able to talk on their portable radio from anywhere they're at. So even with the P25 system, which is estimated over $6,000 or $6 million as an investment for Carroll County, that gives you 41% of the county to be able to talk inside of a building. So for 100% effectiveness with a portable radio in a building, it's non-existent for Carroll County because we're just geographically challenged. If you look at the DMR, Next Edge, those coverages are not that much difference. 67% for on-street and 32% in-building.
And that's compared to the 43% and 10% today.
Correct.
10% of the time, our first responders can actually talk back into dispatch. So if they, if they have, if they have an incident in the house, they need additional resources or they need law enforcement backup, they may or may not be able to return without leaving the house.
It requires multiple responders who'd be taking care involved or structure fire to actually get what we call a hut and back out to find a point of connectivity or going back to our mobile radios in our trucks to make that connection.
So once the assessment was completed and federal engineered and provided their report, we were able to have a joint board session between Carroll, City of Galax, and Grayson County basically disclose our findings. And during that meeting, it was agreed on as important as to continue interoperability to public safety, commit to find funding for a digital interoperable radio system, whether it be grants, ARP, opioid lawsuit settlement, low-interest loans, vendor leasing, legislation, or public safety tax. In that meeting, we was able to get approval for the task force under the guidance of Twin County 911 Commission to issue procurement documents for early next year and acknowledge we can no longer solely rely on volunteer agencies to be able to purchase and maintain their own communication equipment. So progress in the next steps. We've been able to submit a grant for a substantial amount of funding. However, it's a low probability for anyone in Virginia to get that funding most likely. So January the 26th, 2022 is the next milestone, and it's FEMA's funding the last half of 2022. The grant that we've submitted in is for regional and with 10 years of maintenance built into that grant funding as well. The RFP's been issued. Proposals are due back March 31st. We're currently this week doing a pre-bid meeting with potential vendors and taking them out to all of our sites and letting them take an inventory and see exactly what we have to offer. RSAF grants are in progress, which are 50/50, and a joint session to be scheduled for April of 2022. We know that the county's currently in budget cycle, so we just wanted to get some information out there for you guys so you should be thinking about that and see what comes in with the RFP process. Any questions from anyone? It is based off of the present towers we have. During the assessment, federal engineering looked at adding additional towers and spaces, any that was recommended by rescue members, fire department members, or law enforcement or fire and rescue. And there was several suggestions. However, during the propagation software that federal ran, those locations didn't provide to show anything of any value or any increase. So, you know, we've pretty much got the best sites right now. We may just have to work on doing a little bit more elevation with towers. We're in the right sites, we just need to be a little higher up in a couple of spots. Most of the towers in Carroll, we do own or have a long-term lease agreement, like Beamer's is a long-term lease agreement. We have a lease agreement with WBRF, which is Fisher's Peak, and the one there in Galax. Route 100 is our own property. Laurel Rescue is county-owned property. The only other one that we've got is Indian Ridge, and it belongs to the cell phone company. But it was a grandfathered in from Ducks Per Rescue, so.
I would have to look.
They are, they're on the Twin County 911, so it, Brandon can easily add that on. We do have that as a special one.
It's not on our public site.
I can get you the.
Shape five.
Should I get that to you or Brandon? Should I get that to you or Brandon?
I can request it from Brandon if I need to. I'm just looking on our, um, our, uh, the SIF already have it, but I can get it if I, if I need it.
Well, I mean, I've got it and I can do it if I want it.
That'd be great.
I'll copy, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the, uh, federal grant policies. Justin Mark.
So what these policies are, um, they're in response to, uh, one of the art comments and, uh, our reports, uh, earlier. Um, more or less, these are, uh, just formal statements, uh, of what we're already doing. Um, and the procedures that we have, even though we're not policy, we're part of a local person policy, um, or just best practices of government. Um, this is formalized into a document. Um, the state has been more around conducting, uh, various localities of how they, uh, generate money, uh, which they'll continue to do, uh, and they surely will, uh, probably move on to their hard funding that, uh, to make sure that, that everybody's been asked the correct way, or whatever requires to, to, uh, and, and one of the findings that has been coming up, uh, throughout the state, uh, in, uh, the policy document, uh, so again, if, if not, then, uh, maybe it will require a little bit of some, uh, to, to, uh...
And I've reviewed them and, um, offered a few edits, and you have the edited version, the final version in front of you, and, um, I agree that really this is documented, this is having a policy document in place, um, so that the auditors will have something this to refer to, but this is really policies that the county's been following, um, just consistent with Conflict of Interest Act, Public Procurement Act, uh, et cetera, so...
So does this need a motion?
Yeah.
To adopt?
Adopt.
Okay. They have a motion to adopt this federal grant policy?
I so move.
All right, have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second. Are there any discussion? Here and then I'll start to vote with Mr. Early.
Yep.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, next on the agenda is the Carroll Response Truck. Barry Bergeron.
I can go ahead and do this one. Um, what we received is requests from Piper's Gap. They had a 2008 GMC Response Truck. And all the vehicles that are used for emergency service are titled through the county, so we, we pay the insurance on them and they maintain them. Uh, what they're wanting to do is to trade that vehicle in for a newer model Response Truck, identical type of truck. Um, from my records, we do not show us paying for the original 2008 vehicle. So, um, uh, we're just, we, we title them in our, uh, so that we can, we title the trucks in order so that we can cover them on our insurance. It saves all the volunteer agencies money. So what they're wanting to do is trade this vehicle, so it'd be my recommendation to go ahead and, uh, allow us to transfer that title back over to Piper's Gap so they can trade it. It's an even swap for them, so it will require no money from the county.
Require a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I might get a motion.
All right, have a motion to have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Start to vote with Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is the, uh, old business, the, uh, we added committee appointments to the agenda. Um, are there any motions for Social Service Board?
I'd like to make a motion for Freddie Bobbit.
All right, have a motion, Mr. Bobbit, Social Service Board, to have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second. Are there any discussion? Uh, here and then I'll start to vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, next there's an opening for the Planning and Commission Board to have a motion for anybody to fill that committee appointment on the Planning and Commission Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for Donette Moore to fill that position.
All right, have a motion for Donette Moore. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Here and then I'll start to vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, next on the committee appointments, uh, the Airport Commission, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a policy that requires a Twin County Airport Commission member, at least one to be a sitting member of the Board of Supervisors and to the direct county attorney to prepare a resolutions to this effect.
Okay. All right. That being said, is there a motion to fill that position with somebody on the board?
I'm sorry, I, I think we need a second and a...
Okay.
On that policy.
All right, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second. Start to vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the mo- now that we need to fill that position on the Airport Commission with a board member, do you have a motion for a board member to be...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion and point, uh, Jody Early as a replacement for Dr. Littoral, effective immediately, and with that, we need to thank Dr. Littoral for his service.
Absolutely. Have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second. Are there any discussion? I'd like to ditto Mr. Collins' comments to Dr. Littoral. I've got the pleasure of serving with him a couple of years on the board, and he was adamant about helping the people of this county. With that being said, I'll start to vote with Mr. Early?
Upstone.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is, uh, board member comments. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Dixon.
I just want to thank all the citizens, everybody that come out. Good to see everyone. Um, looking forward to working with everyone. I learned a lot tonight. Uh, two things, I noticed the Hope House and, uh, FEM Resource, not asking for a lot of money for the services they provide. I'd like to see if we can help them. Um, and we definitely got to do something with the towers. That's been a problem when I dispatched years ago, so, uh, it's not gotten any better, obviously. So, but I appreciate y'all working on something to come up with that, and we'll work with you and hopefully get something fixed soon. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, just want to reiterate what, um, Joey said. Thank you for coming out, everybody, all the citizens who came and the ones who presented just the passion that you have for what it is that you do. I appreciate that very much. On behalf of, uh, the presentation that was made on our financial, uh, presentation, on the pres- presentation, uh, just, just want to make a point where I was elected to serve in the Fancy Gap District, you know, we've gone from $8 million to $24 million, and according, if I heard him right, it's recommended that you have a high end of 25, and we're at 31%. Did I hear that correctly? That being said, you know, I've heard several of my citizens have said that, uh, the county's probably in the best shape that it's been in many, many, many years, but its citizens feel like that they've been neglected the most that they've been in many, many years. So I want to change that. I want to see, you know, one of the things that I see in this report, uh, we spend a lot of money on education, and we have to do that. We spend money on, uh, public safety, and we have to do that, health and welfare, and I hope we can spend more, but, you know, the community and economic development, the, the parks and recreation, um, there's, there's things that I want to see us focus on and, and put some resources into and put some planning into. Uh, I want Carroll County to be a place where people want to come and live and raise their families, and people also want to come and retire, and where people can come and find recreation and, and just be a great place to li- it is a great place to live as far as I'm concerned, but we can offer more. We put out an RFP to, uh, see about getting, uh, the Kane and Convenience Center back online. That was one of those things that was taken away, so I hope that we can do that. Um, lots of things. I appreciate, uh, these board members. Uh, I believe we're all going to work together to do the best that we can do. I appreciate Mike Watson, the job that he does. Worked with him, uh, a short time, but when on the EDA Board, we got to work together some too. I just appreciate the job that he does, and I just believe that Carroll County's best days are before them, and I'm excited about that.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for coming and participating. Just like always, it's good to have citizens come and speak to us, and, and that's all I've got to say.
All right, Mr. Early?
I'd also like to echo what has been said previously by the other board members. Uh, first, I consider it a privilege to be able to serve the county and look forward to the challenges that we have and working towards solutions. And again, the passion that everyone shows is greatly appreciated. I apologize for the length of the meeting tonight, being the first meeting really of the year, though, that's kind of to be expected. Mr. Collins brought up the fact that, uh, our fund balance is where it is, and that's really good. It's higher than it needs to be, and, you know, people in the county do, I think some feel like they've been neglected, and parts of the county that have been neglected the most are in my district and in the Ducksboro area of Pine Creek, and I want to see that change. And part of that is the PSA, the water, the sewer, major artery like 221, and the water stops at the elementary school, less than a mile outside of the town of Hillsborough. I find that unacceptable, and I challenge the PSA to try to work solutions, find grant money, whatever they need to do, to give people an option to be able to have better lives. The reason our kids leave is because of infrastructure, things like water, sewer, and broadband. I have a hotspot at my house, and the only reason I can use that is because Sprint, now T-Mobile, put up a tower within three miles of my house. It's way past time that we have broadband throughout the county, and I know Mr. Watson is working on that, and I greatly appreciate his efforts, and I want to see something happen to where we stop talking about this. 1999, CenturyLink told me they were going to bring DSL out past my house. Still isn't there. You read the survey that Design 9 did, and I think they did a decent job. Uh, residential customers responded, businesses not so much, but the underlying line theme is our broadband here in this county is non-existent, and providers like CenturyLink, and I'm just quoting a comment, suck, and that's in the survey. So it's time to put that behind us and start providing our citizens with the tools they need to bring business here, to keep our kids here so they can make decent livings. So that's all I want to say about that, but water, sewer, and broadband, big priorities and, you know, while I'm going to be here. Uh, back in December, there was a, uh, a motion to abandon a section of, uh, Route 683 Stonewall Road in the Fancy Gap area of Carroll County. Uh, it passed, uh, there was an amendment made to the motion that the county reserve the right for easement for future growth in water and sewer. Uh, after looking it over a little closer, it, that is not necessary on this particular abandonment. It probably is on a lot of others, but I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we delete that requirement, uh, for an easement for future growth in water and sewer on the property, uh, of that road abandonment. So with that is a motion. I hope I can get a second.
I'll second.
All right, have a motion, a second. I'll start to vote with Mr. Dix- or any discussion?
I'll guess. I think I've had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Artito too, and I don't think it's something that we'll, we'll need down the road. I'll start to vote with Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And with that, again, thank you for coming out. Hope you enjoy what's left of the football game.
Well, I guess it gets down to me, and I want to ditto what my board colleagues have said here tonight, you know? It's, um, exciting times to see a new board and opportunities to grow, and look forward to that opportunity, and very thankful and honored that you put your faith and trust in me to be the chairman of 2022 this year, and hope I can serve the board and the citizens within the best of my capabilities, that's for sure. And, uh, I guess one of my goals, I've thought of a lot of things as chair this year, I would like to, um, uh, we have a budget goal questionnaire that, that Mr. Watson's fixed, and I would like to see it just maybe go a step further, and, uh, by the 24th, the budget work session, board come with a list of, of their goals and things they would like to do, because, you know, every district has something different, and, uh, I'd like to see them maybe staff get them and prioritize them, and, uh, not only come up with a list of objectives for the board and the county administrator and stuff to work on, but maybe put it on Facebook or on the county website so the citizens can have an opportunity to, to interact with this, with the survey to see, see what their needs are, and I'm sure a lot of them will be sort of what Mr. Early said about, about the internet broadband, and is one of the reasons I chose to run and, and take office, is I just feel like we're so underserved in our, in our community, and, um, you know, just, um, I guess we're all on embarking CenturyLink tonight, but, you know, they got a grant from the federal government to run a, to run fiber optics down 221, and it actually goes down near my, near my house, and, you know, it was put in, had to be put in by October, and it's, it's just sitting there, you know? Nobody's hooked to it. It runs all the way down 221, and covers a lot of, um, the trunk of Law Fork in Pine Creek, not a, not a single customer on it, so it's just frustrating, and I appreciate Mike, all his efforts and work on, on trying to get, you know, citizens, CenturyLink, you know, we're trying a lot of different options, and I know that Mr. Durbin and the board's worked a lot over on, um, on the Training Center property, and, you know, um, hope that, you know, eventually we can get some resolution to that. I will say that, um, that, you know, it's, um, getting late, and I guess we'll move on to county administrators' comments.
Don't have a thing to say.
All right, um, county attorney comment?
I have no comment, thank you.
All right, I'll, we got to pick a time for the January 24th budget work session. Anything that...
6:00 PM, isn't it?
Uh, that's the...
Oh, that's...
That's with the school board?
All right.
At 6:00 would work good for me to...
6 o'clock?
Yeah, with work.
Is that going to be pretty tight if it... Okay, 6 o'clock?
What else do we have on?
It's January 24th, it's just a budget work session.
Uh, let me see. Um, yeah, I can do it by any time that day.
5 o'clock?
Do 5.
6 o'clock?
I'd done it, Matt.
We can do 5.
Is that for the entire board?
Yes.
Yes, yes, for the whole. It's just a work session for all of us, or we're going to go over some of the budget goal questionnaires and...
Let's do 5. We can do 5:00 PM.
5 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll... Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Durbin?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we have a 5 o'clock, January 24th budget work session?
I'll make that motion.
All right, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Start to vote with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Did you have something, Mr. Watson?
I was just going to say we're going to invite just a couple, you know, two or three different, I'm going to say groups or departments to come in and, and talk about some of the, the issues that they have. We're not, I'm not having everyone come in, but there's some that are difficult to either the radio and a few others, so, but I'll send an email prior to that and let you know who, who we want to invite, um, and then go over the type of goals that we're, the long-term future as far as some spending that needs to be done and put together a path. So, all right, I'll entertain a motion for a chairman.
I'll make that motion.
All right, have a motion, a second?
You already said it.
All right, you didn't say it. I'll start it with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
And I vote yes.[1788.63]